Okay, Commissioner, Chair Lee, the webinar is live to the public. And if we could just ask everybody to mute themselves if you are not speaking, please? Can you mute the public?
So I unmuted it. Does that let me talk?
Yes. And then when you want to mute again? Carolyn, whoever is helping Irene, if you would ask them to mute.
Okay, I have muted it on my end.
Okay, great. All right. Well, good afternoon. Let's call this meeting to order. And I believe we start with a roll call.
I would be happy to, Chair Lee. We can start with Commissioner Blue.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Webb?
Air.
Commissioner Wang? Vice Chair Gordon is a few minutes late. And then Vice Chair Lee.
I'm here. We do have a quorum. I still hear a lot of background noise from someplace. I'm sorry about that. I have to read a, since this is a virtual meeting, I have to read a announcement about, do we have the public now participating?
Yes, we do, Chair Lee.
Okay, so I will read this instruction here. Due to the physical distancing protocols in place at this time, we continue to encourage public participation remotely. Information on how to provide public comment is explained at the top and bottom of the published agenda. There are two ways to participate. Join this meeting by clicking on the link at the top of the agenda. Use the raise your hand button to be called on at the appropriate time. Please turn off your video and unmute yourself only when called upon. Phone participation can be done by calling a number 408-638-0968 with a conference ID that, 831-3566-3601. Press 9 to raise your hand to be called on and *6 to unmute yourself when called on. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for that specific item. Okay, so then the next item, which is not printed on the agenda, but I think it's required is that we approve the agenda for today. As everyone has had a chance to review it, do we have a motion to approve the agenda for today's meeting?
Commissioner Lee, there is no expectation that a commission approves its agenda.
All right. In which case, we go to the Pledge of Allegiance. And if I could ask Commissioner Wang to please recite the Pledge of Allegiance. We all stand if you are able to.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Welcome.
The next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. And the item here is to approve the minutes from the January meeting, which were published. Are there any comments, questions regarding the minutes from the last commission meeting?
I have several comments, questions. And maybe it's because I've forgotten, or I was listening when something was happening, or I didn't take notes what I had completely, but one of them had to, one of my questions, I have three actually, was under new business with Vince thoroughly explaining the data he collected. And I was taking, I don't know whether this is, maybe he'll explain it again if he's here today. There was, I was taking notes about that. And so my question was, where did the data come from? And I had a note that it came from the 2010 census. And I'm not sure if that was right or not, because I was listening and writing all at the same time. Can I, anybody comment on that? Is that, can we add that? Do we know that?
Commissioner Wang, we have invited Vince Semenitis for today's meeting. I don't see him on the participation list yet, but maybe I don't see, I don't see the participants. Oh, here we go, attendees, let's see. Yeah, but he's not a part of the attendees yet at this point. But if he does join the meeting, then we can ask him that question.
Oh, oh, can I ask now? Is it, I don't know if that's a correct, I mean, if it's actually a correction in the minutes, or I should be asking that later when he's talking again?
Well, since he's here, I think when we get to his part in the, yeah, I see now.
I am, as part of today's presentation, going to show some of the data and where it came from. But it is correct that the census data that we got was from the 2010 census.
Okay.
I'll elaborate on that today.
Okay, thank you. The next question that I had, since I kind of thoroughly read the minutes, was under Part 4, Discussion of the 2021 Vision Task Subcommittee. And I thought I had also, I listed under the two age-friendly, but I thought I had also volunteered for the reentry and reopening plan for the senior center. Did I, did I, I thought I had. Anybody know about that?
So Commissioner Wang, this is Sheila Kanzian, Director of Recreation. I'm sitting in today because Bob is out on personal leave. So the best that we can do is that we can have Giovanna go back and listen to the tape, and we can correct that later on if needed.
Okay, or I, if not, I'd like to volunteer. Maybe there's another opportunity today. And, okay, lastly, is where it says that Bob had provided a brief update of the physical improvements. And I don't remember him, I, or maybe he did, but that's why I'm saying I don't remember, or I was, maybe I was trying to take notes then. But what were the physical improvements that he updated? Does that, does anybody remember that?
So this is Stephanie. I can speak to that. I know that the staff have been working on updating some aspects of the senior center. We've installed a new desk, a front desk area, that will allow more space for volunteers, and it's a little bit more accessible. They've also added some new doors to separate where the fireplace room is, so that can be its own separate room for additional programming. And I believe there's also been some paint work done, just to kind of update the building. So the goal is just to do some things that we can do while the building is closed for the most part, and have it be brand-new when you guys come back.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me know. I look forward to getting back there. Thank you. Those are my comments.
Well, it sounds to me like we have some clarification of the minutes, but that we don't need to amend the minutes at this time.
No, it's okay.
They are correct as far as they go, and we just had some clarification. Is that a correct understanding?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So then we would need a motion to approve the minutes from the January meeting of this commission.
This is Mary. I make a motion to approve the minutes from the January 11th meeting.
I would second the motion.
Thank you. Do we need a roll call for approval of this?
Yes, Chair Lee, I'd be happy to. Commissioner Webb?
Approved.
Commissioner Blue?
Approved.
Commissioner Wang?
Approved.
Vice Chair Gordon?
Somebody called mine here.
Yes. Your vote on the minutes from the January 11th meeting? Thank you. And Chair Lee?
Yes, approved.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. The next item is a public comment. And at this point, I would invite the members of the public, if they have any comments. And let me read the instructions here. The person wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the commission at this time. State law prevents the commission from taking action on any matter not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. So if you are a member of the public and you would like to be heard at this time, please raise your hand so the staff can allow you to speak.
Chair Lee, I do not see any raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you. In that case, we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the update on age-friendly cities initiatives. And we've already heard that Vince Semenitis is with us today here and is prepared to provide an update. And since his is the first project of the four that are on the list of projects, can I invite you, Vince, please, to present your update?
Sure. So what I thought would be most helpful at this point, since there's a lot of data being collected, as we already heard mention of, to show you how the data is coming together. And you'll have a better sense of where we're going with this if I can just show you this with some screen sharing. And then I'll take any questions and give you one concern that I have with where we are right now. So let me try to see if I can share the screen. Tell me if you can see this in a minute. Can you see this document, senior concentrations by property?
Yes.
Great. Okay, so the first thing to make sure everybody's on board, we were trying to identify what properties, what condos, apartment buildings, et cetera, in the city with 40, 50 people or more in them, seniors in them, and where they were in the city by neighborhood. So we assembled that, we pretty much completed this phase of it. And I'm just going to scroll down so you could kind of see what we ended up with. So the first group here is multi-residential condominiums or rental apartments, 40 or more units limited to seniors. And these are ranked in order of the highest number, largest number of units, such as Peninsula region with 207, down through number 15, San Mateo Rotary Floritas, which is 50, and everything in between. So we know how many units there are in these buildings. We know that they're seniors only and what their criteria are. Some are 55-plus, some are different than that, some are independent, some are assisted in memory care. We have all that data with links to the website. So the second group, though, not all the seniors, obviously, in San Mateo live in dedicated senior housing. And we still need concentrations of them. So here was the last one, Leslie Plaza. So there's another group of smaller residential condominiums or rental apartments that are senior-specific. And they're going to be included if they're within a certain distance. This is all a draft document, but it gives you a sense of where we are. So it says X distance. So it may be if it's within a half mile or quarter mile or something to one of these bigger ones, then we'll want to add it in. And there's roots and sidewalks in that area so that we can lump it together. If it's by itself, it won't, in a location that's by itself, it won't justify it based on the size. But we're going to look at that and figure that out. The third group that we looked at are multi-residential condos, this group three, that are not limited to seniors. But we know from our investigation, have senior populations that are larger than the average number of seniors in the city, more than their proportional representation. And it may be because of the amenities that they offer that are very attractive to seniors, or maybe the way they market it, et cetera. So the Gramercy, Top of the Mans, Foster Towers are in this category of buildings that are mostly seniors, but not limited to seniors. And the last category that we looked at are very large, multi-residential condo rental apartment complexes that are not limited to seniors. And their number of seniors in them is probably representative of their population in the city overall. But even though it may be 14, 15, 20% seniors, they're so big that that gives us high enough seniors to qualify for consideration. So Woodlake's the biggest, 990 units, Park Place 575, and so on. So the bottom line is, you know, we've identified 30 properties in the city that have a lot of seniors in them. And then the next phase of this is to try to figure out where they are and to plot them on a map. But before we do that, we wanted to double-check the rationale and the accuracy of these numbers. They don't have to be accurate. We're really only looking for ballpark numbers in total. And any one unit doesn't matter. It's the aggregate number of seniors in a group of areas where we're going to have roots and destinations from. But nevertheless, what we did is a census data. And the way that we were able to get at this, can everybody see this table? Can everybody see this table?
Yeah, can you make it bigger? Vince, can you make it bigger?
I can try. Let me see. No, I can't.
That's okay.
Let me, let me try. Here's what, the individual numbers don't matter. What I want to show you is what's available. We took every neighborhood in, from the census track data, and there's about 20 of them or more. And the way the data is available at this particular statisticalatlas.com site that pulls all this 2010 census data and analyzes it, we could see how many seniors are in any particular neighborhood in the age 60 to 69, 70 to 79, 80 to 89 or above, actually, how many seniors total in that neighborhood. And then what we did, and these are all ranked from highest to lowest. So the South Shoreview neighborhood has the most seniors overall, Hayward Park second, San Mateo Village third, and so on. And what we did was we took these properties, those 30 properties or so that we identified that are senior-specific or high numbers of seniors, and we figured out what neighborhood are they in? And how many seniors are in them? And then we, we had the next step is, we know how many units are in there, but we don't know how many actual senior residents are in there. And that matters more than the number of units. So we did a little exercise, tried, we called property managers, we talked to people that we know in these buildings. We did some estimates on some buildings where we had the data. And generally, for senior-specific housing, it's reasonable to use a number of one and a half. About half the units are generally single resident seniors, and about half are couples. So if you take and divide that in half, you got one and a half per unit as a reasonable estimation. There's no way you can get the actual numbers of that data. And even the property managers don't necessarily keep that data, or they can't give it to you based on fair housing rules. So we did the best we could to estimate it. For other types of units that are not senior-specific, there's other ways that we estimated it. But similarly, we came up with a number that gives us an idea of how many resident seniors are in the properties we're interested in. And these other columns are interesting, total population of the neighborhood. And the last one, this is SRP target year. And what that means is that's the city sidewalk repair plan. And it's on a 15-year cycle, as I mentioned in previous report. And this is the year that it was last done in that neighborhood, or is scheduled to be done if it hasn't been done in that program. And that's useful for us later. But the bottom line is, the usefulness of this statistic is that if we are able to capture and repair the sidewalks in the areas of our properties only and not throughout the city, then we're going to capture about 14% of all the seniors in San Mateo are in these properties. So that's, if, for example, the sidewalk roots in those areas that we plot are maybe 5% of the sidewalks in the city, we'd be doing, you know, the leverage of this project would be three to one. In other words, we're capturing three times as many seniors, you know, as we would if we had tried to do it randomly, let's say. So that's a second piece of data and how we're capturing it. The third piece, to go back to the question about census track data, here's the way we actually can get this. This is one example that we pulled from. And this is for the 80-plus group. And this is, each of these little blocks here is a neighborhood in the census track world. And the colors indicate what neighborhoods have the majority of the seniors. So 19.7% of all the senior 80-plus groups are in, you know, this neighborhood has that percentage, I should have said that wrong. This neighborhood down here has almost 20% senior population. This one, you know, these areas here where most of our properties are so far, at least, there are some down here, but this is the area, and it's supported by the census data. But it is available to capture the 60s, 50s, 70s, 80s. And it's, it gets tricky because different properties have different criteria. So seniors may be able to get in if they're 55 or up in this particular group, or 65. Or you may have census track data for 60s and 70s, but you have other data by 65. So we're doing the best we can, trying to take all these inputs and figure out the best way to come up with the best estimate we can to do what we're trying to do. The next, I just dropped down the one I wanted to show you. The next thing we're doing is estimations. So once you know what property, like the Gramercy Stratford Leslie Towers, which are behind Central Park, you want to see, well, what are the walking destinations that those city seniors could go? Now theoretically, you could go any distance at all if you have the capability and the time. But we had to set some arbitrary limits. So we took a half mile as a starting point. And we started identifying where would people be able to walk to within that half-mile distance. And we had already established the criteria, shopping, medical facilities, government buildings, places of worship, et cetera. And these, we actually, in some cases, walked them using our iPhones, or in other cases, went on Google Maps and actually used the walking route destinations to get the data. But you could certainly go to Central Park, you're right next to it. Downtown shopping, depending upon whether you're going down to the El Camino end or the railroad end, you can go to the supermarkets or .3 to .4 away. You can go to the post office in that distance, you can go to either the St. Matt's across El Camino South, or to the Episcopal Church North, on the same side, the library's within range, the social security office is within range on, on, I forget the name of the street. But what's interesting, if you've ever gone to the social security office and you tried to get there down Fifth, it's Clermont, you can't, there is no sidewalk there. There's like lumber yards and all kinds of industrial facilities. So you have to go down Ninth and go up the sidewalk to get to it. But you can do it still within .5. The Mills Health Center and the clinical office is there. And either other senior buildings, if you want to visit a friend. So the idea is, for every one of those 30 buildings, is to do this kind of analysis and see what's in a half-mile range and what are the routes that are likely to take. And if you do that, what, we started playing, Sheila got us a map of the city to start playing with before we start getting on the computer and doing it there. But this is an example of what it looks like. We, all the green on this, maybe I can make this one bigger, not when I'm screen sharing. But anyway, all the greens are the properties that we have in this portion of the city. You can see how concentrated they are in the areas around downtown, all the way down to the peninsula in this area and out into the other side of El Camino. So if we start mapping routes to all these destinations, and these color-coded, gee, are the government buildings like the library and the social security office, and the supermarkets are downtown and so on and so forth, we know which one each of these are. We could, you'll see that it's probably isn't going to make sense to draw a single line through all these. It's probably going to make sense to draw a zone. And all of the streets are in there are potential routes for anybody to take, because you'll be coming from any distance in any direction to get there. So we'll end up with blocking out areas. It may make sense down here to do streets, or it may depend on blocking out this. We don't know yet. But that's the work we're doing right now, is this phase. We are trying to identify the destinations. We've done maybe half, six of the 30 so far. Wes Teoka and I are doing this piece of it. And we have advertised on Nextdoor this morning for somebody who's really good with Google Maps to take the data that we generate and to start plotting and color-coding the stuff in a way that it'll make a lot more sense than little pieces of paper. But this way, we can lift them up and move them around and try to see where it makes sense to draw lines before we go to the, to the full, full thing. So that's, that's where we are, and that's how we collect the data, where it came from. I hope it makes more sense than just listening to it to actually see some of this. I'll take questions, and then I have one important issue and, that I want to explain and get your help with.
Well, thank you so much. It's very impressive, the work you've done. Do we have questions for Vince?
No, okay.
I don't have any, I just wanted to say, this is Ellen, that I was very impressed. So thank you for, I really paid attention this time. Thank you.
All right. What would help me and Wes now, in particular, is whether the, what you're seeing and hearing makes sense. Does it make sense, for example, to identify the properties and categorize them the way we did? Does it make sense to estimate the number of seniors the way we did? Does it make sense to say, well, we have to draw a line somewhere around walking distance for a senior, is a half a mile reasonable? Anything that you did, that didn't sound right, I mean, we spent a lot of time trying to come up with what we did, and we think we can defend it. But if it doesn't make sense to somebody, we would certainly like to hear it so we can rethink it.
Well, just speaking for myself, I thought the criteria you chose are very sensible, and they make a lot of sense to me in terms of getting to the people that you really want to concentrate on. I couldn't think of anything else to add at this point, so I think you did a great job outlining your study.
Good. Well, when we, if you remember, Monica, when we did this, when we did this in the task force and selected this, we were hoping that we could capture maybe 10% of the senior population by doing this. And that would be a big benefit for the city if we could somehow narrow all they had to do to address the needs. If we'd get 10% of them, it would be good. It looks like we're going to be above that. And we're estimating about 14, based on what we have so far, which is encouraging. Maybe it's, you know, if you challenge all the numbers, maybe it's 12, maybe it's 15, I don't know. But somewhere in that range, we're above what we were thinking we, where we wanted to get. Yeah.
I don't know if you can see me now. One, my only thought is you're basing it on the census of 2010. Of course, we just had the census of 2020. I don't know when that data would be available. And do you have any?
It won't be available in nearly enough time. And I think that what you're going to see is the main population, the last 10 years, what's mainly happened is the whole Baywood development, I mean, Bay Meadows development is going to be major. But in our, from our terms, the number of seniors that moved in there relatively small versus the overall population. And two, the sidewalk should be in really good condition. So I don't think it's going to impact our numbers and our issues in case in any So I don't think it's going to impact our numbers and our issues in case in any major.
Great. Any, any other questions for Vince? This is really, as I said, very impressive study.
I, I'm interested particularly, Sheila, does this make sense to you in particular? Since you, you're at some point going to be, you know, representing this with us in, in the city world. Does it make sense what we're doing so far?
I, I mean, I think congratulations Vince and, and Wes. I, I know that he's on as an, as an attendee. I think you all did a, a great job in terms of highlighting that. I think the identification of the senior facilities relative to the percentage of population. If you're really looking at trying to get the biggest bang for the buck, I think makes a lot of sense.
Okay, great. So here's, here's our issue. What, what we thought from our first meeting with, with Matt Zuck and Public Works, and I, I brought this to a previous meeting in terms of timing, was that we would have the data from the consultant who's doing the ADA study. The city would have it in January and we would have access to it sometime in the first quarter. So I was planning on being able to see what the ADA data looked like by the end of March. I followed up with Matt to try to see where that is and, and how this, this is going to work. And, and things are very different than what I anticipated. And we have to figure out together it's how to deal with this. So the city does have the data from the consultant, but it is not in a report format. What it is, is a database that the, that the, that the consultants created that have all their findings in, you know, block by block and, and throughout the city. And every, everything they did is in a database that the city can access to look at. And they are looking at it for projects that are currently underway. The report that will be available to us to look at will not be available for months. And the reason is the process of what has to happen to before a written report is generated. So, so what has to happen? Am I still screen sharing? No. Did we stop that?
You stopped.
Okay, so here's, here's what has to happen. So on April fourteenth, the public, the, the Public Works and the consultant are presenting the findings of this study to the, the Sustainability and Infrastructure Committee for the per, commission, for the purposes of getting feedback on how they should prioritize the corrective actions that are identified as needed in this report. Matt, Matt is supportive of using the data that we provide him from an age friendly standpoint. But it's the commission, it's not, it's not the Senior Citizens Commission that is, is prioritizing or providing input to Public Works for priorities. It's sustainability and infrastructure. So, so once, once they get the input from that commission, Public Works will convene a in, internal work, internal city working group that will take the prioritization criteria from that commission. And they will work up an action plan with this implementation schedule to fix the things that need to be fixed. And after that's done, so I'm saying, mid-April, there's a, the criteria the commission needs. Sometime, I don't know how long it'll take to form an internal working group after that. But let's say it's done by the end of April, we'll be ambitious. So then that group will have to spend time trying to figure out the scheduled criteria. So that won't be done in May, maybe it'll be done in June. I don't know, Sheila, you might have an idea of being much more familiar with how these things work. But it's after all of the schedule for fixing these things is, is put together that a written report is generated because the written report that's published for the public has to include that implementation plan. So we won't see the data of what the consultant had until it's already decided what the priorities are fixing things. So that's not the way that I envisioned and hoped this would work. The way that I see around this, there's a couple possibilities. One is that we get access to the database, which won't happen. But we could come up with our list of very specific questions, blocks, et cetera, and ask Matt to see if he will give us the data from the database for those particular streets only so that we could actually figure out how to prioritize what we need or see whether we need to walk those streets to find things that the consultants didn't identify. For example, all the, from an ADA perspective, which was done, they identified, I'm sure, all the sidewalk conditions that are hazardous. So is the, the lift higher than X amount tied to roots damage? Is it cracked? Is it, what are the intersections and, and, and cutouts look like? Are there poles and signs in the middle of the sidewalk that cause people to not be able to get around them with wheelchairs, et cetera? But they may not have captured, the shrubbery is overgrown and, and blocking the sidewalk. Maybe people park their cars halfway on the sidewalk all the time on that street when they don't need to, and that prevents people from getting by. I doubt that the ADA captured, the survey captured it, but I don't know until I see the data. And those are the things I might have to ask Matt for. But here's the other option that we have. One is there is during the, the public comments section of the Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission, I am going to go to that meeting and I'm going to try to make the case as strong as I can for the prioritization of these routes that we identify and whatever data we have and I can do in that short amount of time so that the Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission, you know, agrees and they make it part of their recommendations to the city. I think that besides me doing it from the data standpoint, a representative of the senior commission, Senior Citizens Commission should do the same. I think there needs to be either, the public works should have to present or seek the opinion of the senior commission, the way they're doing the, the infrastructure, sustainable infrastructure. If they don't, if that's not part of the city's process because sidewalks, I guess, and streets and passageways are considered infrastructure and not senior, then I think we need a combined force of the senior commission and me as a representative of an age friendly project to combine our forces to make sure the sustainability infrastructure prioritizes it accordingly. So that's my, that's my pitch and need. I think that's the only way that we could really be confident that we're going to have our stuff, you know. I don't know what the other criteria might be to, you know, in the ADA world besides things that already also benefit seniors. But there may be some that the commission comes up with.
Well, if I just may add, and thank you Vince again. I think that, that we, we, we need to understand that the ADA survey that was done was not just simply confined to sidewalks and street. They looked at every single building that the city had, that the city owns and, and every park pathway that's out there. So I think that when Vince, you were asking about, you know, some, some of the criteria, the two that I think stand out the most is liability. You know, which are the, which are the types of outstanding issues that where there is a liability for the city and really the risk that goes along with that. So I can't speak for Public Works Department. I only know that from my brief discussion with Matt that there's a, there will be a whole list of criteria that the Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission will be looking at. So I want to make sure that we all understand that we're not just focused on sidewalks and, and public areas. But there will be a whole list of criteria that they will want to consider when, when giving some directions to staff.
Right. So, so remember Sheila, and this comes into the money issue and so on, that what, what we have to somehow convey is that we selected this project because we were trying to avoid projects that were very expensive, right, for the city? And, and this one, we thought, we don't need new money, new funds. The city has a sidewalk repair plan and it has a cycle in fifteen years and they've moved, moved through neighborhoods, et cetera. So there's money available every year and they keep doing that. What we're talking about is prioritizing a certain subset of sidewalks in the city because of the benefit it has disproportionately to seniors. And, and it doesn't have to be additional money. It's an allocation of whatever funding would have been for sidewalk repair anyway. And the second part of that is that somehow we have to figure out if the city committed to age friendly certification, then we just have to make sure that it, we pitch it as a way of satisfying an age friendly criteria and commitment. And, and we don't get tangled up in all the other things that are important and need dedicated funding sources to fix in all likelihood. We're trying to stay away from that. And the other reason, by the way, that many of these sidewalk repairs are not things that the city is responsible for. They're actually the owner's responsibility and the city's merely, not merely, it's a work, but it, they need to send the notices out to those owners on these routes to fix those things that are not the city's responsibility. And even that will have an impact on, on making these safer. So I got to figure out how to tie all that stuff. Liability is very critical to this, but we had trouble and I don't know. I think you, maybe you know the answer when we discussed this in the task force. I don't think there's data available on how many accidents or, or falls or whatever, unless there were lawsuits that were filed. You know, we, we don't really know how many people were hurt or injured or tripped on, on, on all of these routes or all the routes in the city, for example. So we're kind of at a loss and with some doubt liability data that would be helpful if we're available.
Vince, also, I think you raise a very important point about the age friendly project. It's, I mean, the, the overall idea of, of having applied to become an age friendly city is to look at what the city does with an age friendly lens. So try to apply that view to many things that the city does, including of course, you know, how it maintains and enforces sidewalk repair issues, for instance. But it, it does require, I think, that, that all the city departments be cognizant of, of the fact that the city has committed to this project and that they should expect to hear from, from the senior citizen particularly that these are issues that we have taken on and that are very important to, to the seniors of the city and, and will need to be considered. So I think you're, you're raising a very important point and I think the Senior Citizen Commission definitely should be doing whatever we can to, to work with other commissions in the city and other departments to make sure that, that viewpoint is, is, you know, important and considered by, by everybody. I mean, that's the commitment this, the city has made by applying for this program. And, and I think it, it, it should be, you know, implemented as much as we can. So thank you very much for raising this. And, you know, you should, you should let us know about dates that come up with hearings where you would like to have support from the commissioners. And I think some of us may, may well want to, to go and support you on that. Do we have any other? Yes, Lillian?
I'm a little blindsided by this information. It sounds as though, uh, there's a lot of work been done by the group in isolating. And I was looking at the map and it really makes a case for where this work is needed to be done. But then to find out that there's a whole other group working on coming up with similar information or supportive information. And as a business person, former business person, I'd like to find out who makes the decision. Is this, is this work that's been done? Just going to get tossed out here or is it, you know? It just seems to me to be a situation where someone has gone pretty far into the, into the analysis and we don't know, we have no idea whether it's ever going to be useful to anybody or even accepted. There's another contract out there that's doing what they consider to be similar kind of work. We're screwed. So, I mean, I think we need some more information on what's been done or what has to be done.
I'm back. I, we lost the connection, but I'm back in case, I don't know where you left.
My, my point was that you have done an incredible amount of work. That last map is a clear sign of what at least needs to be looked at. But then we have this whole other group or contractor or whoever you want to call it that's coming up with data and a report and a recommendation. And we don't know where that leaves you.
Yeah, that's true. But just, I think that, you know, that we could try to leverage that as much as possible, but make sure the city stays focused on age friendly as well. I mean, ADA is important. But there's a lot of overlap between ADA needs and senior needs.
Absolutely, absolutely.
All right.
So I, I think that what we, well, what I would ask is, uh, who's going to make the decision?
So, so if I just might clarify, I think that there is no one single group that's going to make the decision. They're setting the priorities for how the city is going to, to remediate ADA issues, including sidewalks. That's the, that is ultimately the purview of the Public Works Department. That's generally their purview. And they have a commission, as Vince mentioned, which is the Sustainability and Infrastructure. They, I, I don't believe Commissioner Barton that there's overlapping work that's going on. The contractor that was cast was really looking at a review of all the facilities and finding out where those, those ADA issues are. They are not looking at anything about their location relative to the rest of the community. I think the value of this work is that by being able to demonstrate this work, this adds another layer of, of criteria that I think ultimately, when those decisions are made, this will become an important layer in making that decision.
I, I can appreciate that, but also I think that at this point, to the degree that Vincent has gone, there needs to be some communication with Public Works that this project exists and how far it's gone and some commitment that, to be used.
Well, there, there will be. I mean, Matt's expecting to get the, the summary of all, all the routes identified and the rationale behind it. You know, he's, he's, he's looking forward to having that and being able to use that as part of their process. They're just trying to manage, you know, expectations, which we, we're used, we're used to.
Oh, I'm, I'm.
I just, we just, we just have to figure out how the age friendly element stays kind of, isn't lost and blended into other things. Yes.
Actually, yeah. So that's what I would like to see someone keep their eye on. And I would suspect it would be you, Vincent, since you've done all the work.
Well, it is Vincent, of course, who's done a great amount of work. But I think it's the commission, the Senior Citizen Commission. but I think it's the commission, the Senior Citizen Commission, which my understanding is that we are basically expected to, to keep an eye on the age-friendly efforts in the city of San Mateo. And I think that's something that we will need to, to spend time talking about and, and exploring how we can best carry out that, that charge that I understand we've been given. I mean, there, there's definitely the Parks and Recreation Department and their staff very helpful and, and working on it. But when it comes to issues that are broader than just parks and recreation, that, that maybe work on bringing together the various department and in the city and, and make sure that they know what's going on in the age-friendly efforts. I think we play, we should be playing a role in this and we should be prepared to, to carry it out. So I've been thinking about that and I'm, you know, there were some things I wanted to bring up and maybe I will in a few minutes, but it is very important that we have some place in the city that, that is, feels that they are the ones, that this is the group that is, feels that is in charge of making sure the age-friendly efforts go forward. We have a task force, we have Vince, part of the task force, we have our other task force. But, you know, the commission, I think, should be a big part of it. And, you know, we need to come up with a plan that we can, can work this through and make sure that it doesn't get lost in the shuffle. One thing that is part of the, the age-friendly project, which I don't think has really been appreciated in the past, is that the city is supposed to come up with an action plan within two years after its application to the AARP. And the action plan is not just those projects that we have identified. The action plan is supposed to be a more broad view that the city is supposed to decide how it is going to become age-friendly overall, not limited to specific projects that we have identified. This is something that wasn't really a focus of, of the meetings and the focus groups that led us to applying for this program. But now that we are part of it, the AARP expects that this be done and that there will be an action plan presented to, to the AARP within two weeks, two years of when we applied last fall. So that's, that's in the whole other thing that, that we need to at some point look at and decide and, and talk about. And I think the commission, if it wants to play a role, which I think we do, should consider two things. And that's not on the agenda today, but I would like to put it on the agenda for next time. And that is, we should investigate whether we want to meet more frequently because these things need to be moved along. We only meet every other month. I think we should look at meeting every month. And I also think we should be looking at the size of our commission. I've done some research on, on the advisory boards and commissions in other cities in the county. We are the smallest and we are the smallest, I think, by some distance. So there isn't a question that, that we should look at with all this work that I think we will have with the age-friendly effort, is whether we should not have a different-sized commission or some kind of adjunct to the commission. I'm not sure what the proper structure is of this. But those are things that I think if we want to be a force in the age-friendly project that the city has committed to, I think we need to think about it. So I just want to put this up to date and I'd like to have it on the agenda for next time and I would like the commissioners to think about it in the meantime. And I know change doesn't come easy and, and there's all sorts of things to consider and we need to talk to council and we need to find out if we want to make change, how is it done? But having committed to become an age-friendly city, I think we need to see that we are in a position to actually work on that and carry it through. So I, I'm asking that this be put on the agenda for next, next meeting and that the commissioners consider in the meantime, how they feel about this. So we, we took a long time discussing Vincent's project, which I think is, is appropriate because it's very important and he has taken a, a lot of work to put into it. Excuse me. It's now 4:40, 55. So I was supposed to also give an update on the second project that is underway. And it is not as impressive as Vincent's with data and projections and all that, but we have worked hard, the group that has, the little focus group that has concentrated on building a database that can be used to connect with the seniors in, in the community through the various channels where they are likely to, we receive their information. And so we've built a database and have more than 50 confirmed emails for organizations that consist of face-based organization churches, temples, that type of thing that, that publish periodic newsletters, neighborhood associations and civic organizations. And these are all confirmed, verified emails that we know who we are talking to when we send something out. We've talked to many of the people on the other end already. And we are, we are ready to send an introductory email to all of these organizations this month, later in this month, just telling them basically that as part of the, the city's age-friendly project, the city task force is going to create monthly reports on particular programs or services that are of interest to seniors in the city so they can insert that information into their newsletters that they publish anyway and just make sure that this type of information then gets to the people out there who may not even know, ask whether these kind of services or programs are available to them. So that's the status on that project. And I have met with Samantha Weigel, who is doing publicity for the department and with Sheila on this. And we have some plan of doing various things that we can, you know, approach the Daily Journal to have the Daily Journal publicize these efforts and perhaps have them publish small reports from time to time or some kind of a letter from, from a reader about these programs and the age-friendly project. And also the, the Senior Center has an e-newsletter that can be used. We have next-door access that we can use Samantha Weigel's, you know, she can reach all the next-door neighborhoods in the city of San Mateo and one else who we don't have to worry about limits that, that individuals may have to publish these reports on, on the various services and programs that are available. So this is going forward and we've had great help. It's been a lot of work for the people that have worked on this to identify who our recipients should be. And we, we are going forward with that as fast as we can. Also, let me see, I have met with, I will meet with the library board later this month at their meeting to talk to them about cooperating in this effort and also see how they would like to be included with their services as something that we publicize and make people aware of in, in these newsletter inserts that, that we are preparing. So there is, that's the second of the, the specific projects that the city has committed to. And that's, that's moving forward. But as I said, the, these specific projects are not the sum all of the age-friendly effort that the city has committed to. These are just starters. They're sort of meant to, I think is the intent, to, to show that it can be done and to get involved and get people focused on, on the benefits that can be generated by, by becoming age-friendly and focusing on, on what can be done to existing programs to just make it more age-friendly. So there will be a lot of other things that, that need to be considered in, in preparing that action plan that we need to do in, in two years from last October. The, one other thing. The County Commission on Aging is, has formed, and I think I've said this maybe before, has formed an ad hoc committee that is studying how the county commission and the county supervisors and the county generally can assist the cities that have signed up to become age-friendly. So that, that is underway and this ad hoc committee is, you know, talking to all the cities and the focus group representatives in the cities to find out where they stand, how their progress is going, what, what may be needed to make sure that they stay on, on, you know, the schedule that they have set for themselves and, and what can be done to encourage them in the future to, to keep going. So that's, that's underway on the county level and I'm very happy that the county has, has taken that on and is looking into it. Their concern is that, you know, they don't want the cities to feel like the county is telling the cities what to do and that's not the plan. But I think that, that each of the cities that has already signed up for the age-friendly project is, I think will be welcoming to, to just be able to exchange ideas and to find that there's, there's interest and maybe possible support on the county level as well. So that's the report on the second project. We have, we have two others that are, you know, on, that we identified in our application to the AARP pending things changing with, with the COVID situation. And, you know, those are still out there that we need to start thinking about at some point and trying to make efforts to, to expand our focus groups and see how that can be accomplished now that things lightening up a little bit and maybe by the end of the year, we will be able to, to act more normally again. Are there any questions on that project? I guess not. If there are none, we should then go on to the next topic on our agenda. And that is, that is part of actually the, the whole big picture that I think we as the commission need to be aware of. I mean, we have specific projects that are being implemented. And, and Vincent has asked, you know, how are decisions made? Who makes the decisions on, on actually in, in implementing the, the plans and coming up with practical solutions? And one of the, the questions that, that we have asked is, you know, who makes the decisions and how is the budget allocated? And how are programs decided and how are services decided in this city? And I think we will have to look beyond the Parks and Recreation Department, but today we are scheduled to just hear from, from Parks and Recreation on the senior services that are provided here and how that is determined and the allocation and criteria for selecting the programs that are being offered. So I understand that staff has prepared some report on that and will give us an overview of how that is accomplished.
So before I turn it over to the Senior Center staff, in your, in your packet, I did provide a fairly detailed written background about the department's budget, how it fits, the division budget of Recreation and Community Services, how it fits into the larger department budget, where we get from to prepare our budget either on a one-year cycle or a two-year cycle. If there are any questions about the information that I've provided, I'm happy to answer those before I turn it over to the Senior Center staff that's going to talk more about how programs are determined.
I have a question. You said in this budget that there was approximately, or yes, approximately $960,000 for the 2021 budget for senior services and 150 of it went to the Get Around Transportation Program. I was wondering if, what are some of the other, like the other major uses of the money? Like the next one, I'm guessing 100, well, I don't know. I shouldn't have guessed. What are some of the other main purposes of the budget?
So the, the budget itself is not divided into programs. It's divided into expenditure categories.
Okay, that's what I mean then.
The biggest expenditure category that we have is personnel.
Oh, okay.
We have three full-time people at the Senior Center as well as part-time people. So the, a, a big portion of the remaining is, is for personnel, just to staff the Senior Center and provide the program. There is a portion in there for the lunch services at both the King Center and the Senior Center. There is operating money, you know, the, turning on the electricity and water and janitorial supplies and all those sorts of things. And then finally, sort of the other component is really then the programming budget. So when we do special events or bring in contractors or any of those things, those are, those, that's kind of the major makeup of what that budget comprises.
I think at one time, there's actually, is the budget online? Is it public information? I think I saw that when I was applying to this commission, actually. So it is there. Okay, I'll go check it again. Thank you.
Any other questions before I turn it over to the Senior Center staff to talk about programming? Okay, thank you. And with that, I don't know who's going to lead the discussion, but I see lots of familiar faces.
All right. Good afternoon and thank you for giving us this opportunity to share with you our approach to making program decisions or as we like to say, how do we come up with such amazing and maintain our amazing classes and programs? So Lily's going to start our, our slideshow here. And so first and foremost, it is the, with, it is the same if it's pre-COVID, during COVID and after COVID, we listen to our patrons is how we get our programs and what we determine what's, what we're going to do. We listen to what they're saying, we engage them in conversation. They're sitting in the lobby or waiting for a class. When we see them out in the streets, we ask, what are they interested in learning or experiencing at the Senior Center? We use surveys a lot to, at the end of our classes, either yearly or after each session, that we would ask for suggestions for future programs. Like after a beginning bridge class, students ask for the next step, an advanced class. So we became, so it became different levels of bridge that we now offer. We also listen in the news or newspapers to the newest fad or trends that's, that is considering our people might be interested in and if we could find an instructor. Mahjong is a popular program that started out as a single class, which now has branched out to Chinese Mahjong, British Mahjong, American and dance beginners. And then this brings us to our next approach of finding it is we, the Senior Center staff and members are, are members of organizations, the California Parks and Recreation Society's Aging Section as well as ORS, which is Older Adult Recreation Services, where we meet with other senior community programmers and we learn what is happening in their cities and we share what's happening in ours. And to tell you the truth, many people are very impressed with everything that's been going on with the Senior Center. So, and we've also partnered up with our senior services companies and agencies who sponsor programs for seniors, AARP, San Mateo Adult School. You can see the, the ones on the bottom of the screen to provide the various programs and classes as well. We also have an amazing tech program. We have volunteer seniors who have former tech people or they were computer people in their past lives who are now available to teach tech group classes as well as individual one-on-one classes. And all the while, we're trying to have a diverse group of classes to offer our seniors. We work with the Dance and Fitness Program section. We work with the Dance and Fitness Program section, as well as the Cultural Arts Sections of our department to offer dance, exercise and art classes. Having an assortment of classes helps to bring a variety of individuals into our center and then they might see something else that they like, stop for lunch or pick up a card game. Before COVID hit, we were working on defining what a senior senior was and how to keep the older seniors interested, all the while attracting boomers as they retire. And then in addition to our classes, we offer a lot of drop-in. We have areas for bridge games and you can sit on the couch and do a crossword puzzle or you can hang out and join a game of bingo. And that's basically how we do our programs. And now Amber will talk about programming during COVID. You're muted. You're muted.
Thanks, buddy.
You're welcome.
You think I'd be used to that after a year of this? All right. All right. So when COVID hit, we obviously knew that things needed to change and that they needed to change fairly quickly. With no hesitation, as Carolyn mentioned, we jumped into action. One of our number one priority was the wellness and safety of our older population. Communication with our seniors was key, being being here to answer phone calls. You know, patrons still coming to the door and emails. We felt that that was very important. The lunch program never stopped, so that was continuous, creating and starting programs such as the Wellness Calls, which you'll hear more about a little later. And then what we, what was coming next was, as Carolyn mentioned earlier as well, is connecting with other cities and making sure that we knew what they were doing. You know, why recreate the wheel if we didn't have to? And partnering up all of our efforts. And we did a really good job with that. Our next area was, what did we learn from the communication from our patrons? Whether it be the calls, whether it be the face-to-face or during the lunch program or the emails, is they wanted to stay connected to their family, to their friends. I think throughout this entire thing, all of these really hit. But A, the first point and the second one, COVID, they needed COVID information. They wanted it. And so we wanted to make sure that we had information for them, ready to go, most up to date. And then we also wanted to make sure that they also had supplies that they need, such as masks, which were in high demand. And we have a great partnership with several volunteer groups. And so we immediately reached out to them and asked them to partner up with us and continue their partnership with us. And we got masks made and were able to pass those out to our members, to even people walking on the street that didn't have them. You know, we did a great job with that. Once we realized the reality of what was going on, we began to work with our tech team of volunteers that we have. We have four tech volunteers. And what were the needs was basic level tech programs that were needed for whether it be your, their computers, PCs, whether it be their Macs, their iPads, their iPhones, their Androids, the list can go on and on. We immediately jumped in and created different types of tech classes, whether it be, you know, one-time classes once a month, or whether it was a four-week class that people would sign up for. And then we also felt the importance of social media. And having, again, them wanting the most up-to-date current information, we felt like this was a great way to segue into the social media outlets. So we hit things like Facebook, Twitter, YouTube, Eventbrite and so forth. Creating different ways to reach our our seniors, that was big as well. We do, we have a monthly newsletter that goes out through Constant Contact. We have a quarterly newsletter that goes out to all of our members that would prefer not to receive an email. And that has all of our classes listed in there, as well as resources, fun activities for them to do and just information in general. And then we also work very closely with our outreach team for when it comes to our websites, our website, the city's website, making sure that it's as user-friendly as possible for our aging population, where, you know, we want to encourage them. And so we do that. And next up, we have Lily, who's going to talk a little bit about the key components of the programming that happened when COVID hit.
Okay, so once we, like Amber established, once we had our program priorities set, we understood what key components had to be included in our programming. So we knew that our programming had to be safe. With the closure of the senior center, we transitioned all activities to Zoom. We made registration a requirement for every activity. So this meant that ahead of time, senior center staff has a list of all participants. We know that the number of people who are participating and we know who exactly needs to be there. So if someone who is not registered tries to join the meeting, we are able to deny them access. Senior center staff also facilitates and monitors all activities. That means we're here to welcome our patrons as they're joining in, as well as monitored throughout the class to make sure that there's no sound issues or if someone, you know, shares their screen and there's something inappropriate, we can catch it, we can catch it and stop it. We haven't had any issues, but we are available to be able to do that. We also understood that programs had to be accessible, accessible, excuse me. So one of the, like Amber mentioned, one of the first tech programs we did was how to use Zoom. And it was the basics of joining in, how to mute yourself, how to, you know, show your video or not. We're also all available to walk patrons through registering online. So we're on the phone with them, we go step by step with them to make sure that they are able to register for their classes, since they cannot stop by the senior center and do it in person like they would have in the past. And like Amber mentioned, we remain, we make sure that they are up to date with everything that we offer through monthly Constant Contact and the quarterly mailer, excuse me. We also make sure that that the the classes were feasible. So most of our activities are free or low cost. And so everyone has access to it and are able to join. And next, we're gonna, Amber's gonna talk a little bit more about the virtual classes that we offer.
Okay, and this time I didn't forget to unmute. Woo, okay, so, um, yeah, virtual classes. I know we've talked a little bit about this already, so I'm just going to quickly go over this. So we started off with just, obviously, the most important one in the beginning, which was the tech programs. But since then, we have continued to evolve and and create new programs for our community members to be able to participate in, from adult music to adult enrichment and to the City of San Mateo and adult enrichment, include staying engaged. We have history classes, adult health and wellness, mindfulness, body, body care, nutrition, aging, Medicare. And then we also had a page that was for adult resources and then our adult technology. And these are just areas that we here at the senior center oversee. This does not include, obviously, the Dance and Fitness Section and/or the Cultural Arts Section. But those also are available for our aging adults as well. Also on here, we put some information on just the four sessions that we've currently had or are in the middle of during COVID. And those are starting off with summer. We actually offered 20 classes and had 174 patrons. And when Lily mentioned walking people through the process, it was a process and we learned it quickly, which was good and and, you know, they bared with us with the walkthrough and it was enjoyable and it, I don't, it felt good that we were able to help as many as people as we did. Fall, we offered 39 classes, 206 patrons registered. In winter, this last session, which is the shortest session, had 30, we had 38 classes with 155. For spring, we have 50 classes that we are offering. We're bringing in about four to five new contractors with some new classes that I'm really excited about, we're really excited about. And obviously, those are to be determined because today was the first day of registration. So now, I believe my partner Lily is up again for some more additional services and that we offer to our community members.
Thank you, Amber. And so, yes, so even with the center closure, we were able to maintain the operation of several other services. First, we had our Get Around Program, which provides affordable transportation for seniors age 60 and over who are residents of the city of San Mateo. To date, we have 776 members. And on average, last year, for the $5 card, we had 82 rides per month. And for the $2 card, which seniors can apply for by applying for the Recreation Fee Assistance Program that's offered through the city of San of San Mateo, with the $2 card, we had 99 rides per month. We also have our medical alone equipment closet, where, you know, members of the community can come by, pick up, schedule an appointment, come by and pick up various items, walkers, commotes, canes, wheelchairs, et cetera. This year alone, we've already loaned out 15 items. And so this is, this is a great resource for our community. That's free, free of cost. You don't have to pay anything. You make an appointment, come pick up your items and then take them home to use. We also have our SASH program, which is our shopping assistance for seniors homebound. This is where we partner clients who contact us or or seniors who contact us with the volunteers who have been vetted by the city of San Mateo. So for this year, I'm sorry, excuse me. Currently, we have 43 clients and 27 volunteers assisting. And this is essentially picking up groceries, picking up toiletries or any other supplies, medications that seniors may not feel comfortable going on and picking up right now or just in general, if they're not able to leave their homes. And we find a volunteer that can assist them. We were also, with the help of 11 redeployed employees, were also able to make wellness calls. We reached 452 of our senior center members and made a total of 143, I'm sorry, 1,463 calls from April, April to December 2020. And these calls were invaluable. We we learned a lot about our community, what they needed. You know, and and we made sure that they understood and knew what resources were available to them here at the senior center. We also were able to continue with our birthday cards. We, it was something that we were doing when the center was open. We would send out every month birthday cards for our senior center members. And we were able to continue doing that with assistance from Commissioner Irene Bluth, who addresses the the cards and then gives us stacks that we mail out every month. So and continuing, Carolyn will touch on our lunch program.
All righty, the lunch program, whoops, I know many of you have seen it, but March 17th was the very first day we served, we did our grab and go. And today we've have, and through today, we have served 8,018 meals through both the grab and go and the delivery programs. We've served over 250 individuals, handed out 44 weekly newsletters. And and through our program, our seniors have celebrated six holidays from the front seat of their cars. So I'm and and then Amber's going to finish it up as Back to the Future.
Almost forgot to unmute. Oh, man, all right, but I didn't. Okay, so the future, what does the future hold? That is a great question. I'm sure we are all wondering that ourselves. So we foresee virtual classes continuing. People might be more comfortable staying home. And so that, you know, we want to take those types of options into consideration. People with mobility or health issues, again, might have to stay home. And instructors that live outside of the area, we have been able to bring in some outside instructors that might not necessarily be able to teach. In the past, it was traffic getting here and just the distance when people coming from further away. And then in-person classes, we see those gradually returning. And then we also see hybrids, having Zoom classes along with the option of in-person. So, you know, depending on the class and depending on the room that they're using, we would have to, obviously have to determine how many we could offer safely indoors and then how many we would be able to manage and still oversee via Zoom. And then lastly, I am definitely looking forward to special events. Our 32-year anniversary here at the senior center. We have our Volunteer Appreciation Dinner, which I know Irene, because Commissioner Irene Bluth, sorry, has seen us all in action here as she's a volunteer at the front desk. And I love these events. And then, of course, our yearly Health and Wellness Fair, we know. Although they might look a little bit different than before, we are definitely committed to delivering quality programs and special events for all of our community members. So we look forward to what the future holds.
Thank you for your time. Does anyone have any questions or anyone like to make any comments about what you've just seen? All right, well, thank you very much.
Well, this was being very helpful to get that overview and and all this information you've prepared. Thank you so much. It's impressive how much you you were able to accomplish with all the difficulties that. Do you have a sense of the comparison, how many people you were able to serve during COVID in the last year compared to the year before? Has has it been about the same number of of people or has there been a big drop in participants in the various, just overall programs?
I think we've seen a new, a different clientele. We have seen a lot of younger people who are are part of our Zoom classes. And we did lose a lot of the older seniors who aren't so computer savvy, unfortunately. But we have been able to gain a whole new, people who are interested in the senior center, knowing that it's not seniors, that it's not just for the older folks. But they, we do offer things that are available for for the the new boomers that are retiring now.
So how do these boomers learn about it? I mean, it's, there's so much out there that you're offering that I would think, you know, it's of interest to to many people, but how how is it publicized? If you're, if you're not already on your email list or on your newsletter list and you don't, you know, regularly read the Recreation Guide, how would you know?
Social media. We work a lot with our social media supervisor, Christine. And we do post on Instagram, Facebook, I know we've used Nextdoor as well, and things like that, then a lot of it's word of mouth. We actually, I believe it was Carolyn had mentioned, our CPRS meetings, our ORS. Through that, we were actually, I and Lily put together a presentation on YouTube, about YouTube and had a class down in, virtually, of course, down in Mountain View. And they had about 18 to 20 people, I believe, register for that. So again, it's it's all word of mouth. And our, I mean, Carolyn mentioned it earlier as well, is that we're, we're looking pretty good. We've offered a lot of different programs. And I think the word of mouth and just the collaborations that we're making throughout up and down the peninsula with the different organizations and I think that's a, that a big help.
Thank you. Any, any questions from anyone else? All right, well, this, yeah, thank you so much. I mean, I'm so happy to hear that that we're getting new people interested in the senior center and hope that carries over into the, you know, non-virtual world that we we hope to enter someday, someday soon. world that we we hope to enter someday someday soon. Um we are, we are at uh at five-thirty now. Um so if there are oh, the next item on the agenda is reports and announcements from commissioners and staff. So that's something that we need to uh still cover. Do we have any reports or announcements from any commissioners? We've already heard about Irene's great work uh during this hard time. Is there anything else that uh anyone wants to report? All right, um in that case, I think uh we could entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Erin Lee?
This is Giovanna. Um I don't believe there is a motion necessary to adjourn the meeting.
I'm learning. So if there's no motion necessary, um if no one has any other uh things they would like to bring to the commission at this point, yeah, we shall adjourn. Thank you very much, everybody. It's
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good meeting. Have a good night. Stay safe.
You too.